Well, we have a little change in the agenda. First thing on the agenda is going to be the sheriff.
I apologize for the change in the agenda. I sent in a request, but it was left off, so I'm sorry for that. Just a couple of quick things. One for action. The first thing I'm going to ask or bring your attention, I lost a deputy within the last month, and I was fortunate enough, once again, to get another one hired at the Academy. He has two and a half years' experience. What I'd like to do, like we did with Officer Leesek, is start him in the two-year matrix to be able to retain him and keep him. So I think, as I said before, that was number seven in your list of things you can approve for for the betterment of the county. So I'm asking the council to approve his, just a little bit of a difference, maybe a dollar an hour, from what he started at, from zero to two years in the matrix.
I got a motion in a second. Move the deputy to the two-year matrix. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And with Andrew's first shift that he worked for us, he had literally, no, didn't have to go through any of our training. They were able to arrest a gentleman who was wanted, a level-one felony out of Rockingham, North Carolina. Sheriff called me the next day and was overjoyed and overwhelmed. They called us, I think, at 1:00 in the afternoon. We had, we got picked up 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. He said he was literally in front of the TV cameras along the East Coast, giving an update about the wanted gentleman, and they handed him a note that said he's picked up in Plaski County. So he's awaiting extradition. Officer Spear, Officer Zimmerman, Sergeant Fred Rogers, and Sergeant Barton were responsible for that. And I think Stark County had some officers, and Jasper County, as well as the FBI. So he was a level-one felon. So that was good work on the part of those officers. So make sure, and also this week is Correctional Officers Appreciation Week, so see one of them out and about. I appreciate you say something to them, all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is Nathan.
Good evening, everybody. Give me one second. I'm going to see if I can get Ken on to the, there we go. So I have two items in front of you this evening. The first is a budget update on the courthouse construction project. If you'll recall, last month, our architect was here to present an update of the project's progress, but the construction company had not yet gotten all of the information back from the subcontractors to update the budget estimates based on the most recent round of design development drawings. Since I've had those, I have met with the steering committee and run them by them, see if they had any questions, concerns. And so now we're bringing it to you to keep, catch you up to speed and discuss any questions you may have at this point. Then I'll take it to the commissioners next week to get them caught up. You'll see two documents, as I had emailed out to you. The eight-and-a-half-by-eleven is the Ton and Blank updated budget just for construction costs, and then the larger sheet is the full project budget. I have been updating as Ton and Blank has made updates to their costs that encompasses architect and engineers, appraisals, bond issue, bond counsel, and then things that aren't part of the construction company's budget, like IT, mover, that sort of thing. Yes, almost, and there are a couple of explanations for that. The first one is that the 2021 number was a rough estimate that the previous architect had put together based on unrefined plans. There was no specifications, any of that. It was just the architect sort of giving us a frame of reference at the time. I don't remember offhand if the June 22 was from the architects or if that was from Ton and Blank, again, rough estimates, but as you'll see, the October and April are based on actual drawing. And so as the project has been fine-tuned, everything has been investigated more thoroughly, and they've actually gotten estimates from subcontractors who would be doing the install work, we have gotten much more refined numbers. Second is obviously that, you know, we started these projects 2018, 2019, prioritize the Justice Center over the courthouse for obvious reasons, and by the time you go from 2020-21 to 2023, the mark, what the market has done over the last few years has had a pretty drastic impact on it. And then getting back to the drawing process, you know, not just is it now that we're at the point where the subcontractors are pricing this instead of the architect, but it is just uncovered a lot of issues that we are making sure that we're budgeting now to avoid any sort of surprises in the construction project, so that ideally that the 5% of the construction budget for contingency and the 5% on our side of it, most of that comes back to us that we can put towards the first repayment instead of paying it for things that we didn't foresee because we weren't thorough enough. We had civil and structural back on site again last week. It has been a much more intensive process than the Justice Center developed project. And that's everything from lessons I have learned from one project to the next, a different architect from Lumina on the project, and obviously the more complicated nature of the courthouse compared to a 25-year-old building. I mean, if you want to go and do that, you can. It's perfectly in line with what a construction project of this magnitude looks like. Respectfully, Tim, I disagree. It's a complete overhaul from new slab to all-new HVAC. This is another 100-year project. This isn't a bandage. I mean, structurally, it's sound enough that it would probably outlast a new build. You guys want to go and spend money on that, look at a new one, that's fine, but we've spent half a million dollars on this project so far. I'm not going to spend any of my time looking at ways to wipe $500,000 out of the budget for eternity. If that is the council's pleasure, you can take it to the commissioners, and they can hire a project manager to dive into that. But I am not, after this much time and half a million dollars spent, I'm not going to commit my, my work time to pissing away half a million plus. Yep, you're good.
Good.
Yeah, you know, this, this project started a long time ago. We've had a lot of opportunities if we wanted to change things, to make changes. And, you know, I think the overwhelming public has shown support in keeping the icon building of our community. And as Nathan pointed out, this building is over 100 years old. Find me too many, find me any other buildings of this style, other than some local churches which were built on this style, which have had maintenance and repairs made throughout the 100-year history of the building, that are still, it works. Find me a steel-framed building that's out there that's 100 years old. You know, find me a pole barn that's 100 years old. You know, these buildings, this building is old, unfortunately, and we can't go back in time and change things. It wasn't maintained properly. If it hadn't been maintained properly, we wouldn't be at this point. But we can't go back in time, so all we can do is try and fix what we have, keep the iconic building that's a symbol of our community, and have it last for another 100 years. We'd do a better job this time of maintaining it and putting a process in play that will keep the building here for hopefully another 200 years.
I don't know, Tim, the fuse went up to the, they took us up to the old courthouse that we did in the quarter of Michigan. And, Lee, I had some of the same feeling, you do this in old building, what we've done. And I went up and seen that, what they had done in there, it was impressive. Really nice. Walk in, and it's nothing like what it's getting what it is now, but, you know, it's still historic, and I was impressed.
I get where you're coming from, but...
It's inefficient.
Well, but, I mean, that's why we're going to be reducing the number of doorways, so we have fewer doors where air is leaking out. We're going to end up with windows that are both more historically appropriate and more efficient than what we have now. We're going to put insulation in where we don't have or don't have enough. I understand, I mean, the price tag is, it is shocking, I get that, but cost of materials for everything else, Mike and I were talking about materials costs this morning, I mean, everything is shot up. We, we looked at cost options a year and a half ago, and this was still the better deal. Whether certain components of this have escalated more than some that we might do in a new build, I don't know. But I will tell you one thing, the construction company we have, they know what they're doing. That would be on the first sheet, coming, coming, line 68. So what we're going to do is mostly single-stall bathrooms. The upper level will have men's and women's restrooms. The first levels will have three single-stall restrooms each. There's room to reduce each one of those by one, but we got some pushback from courthouse users about not having a staff-only restroom. But no, no, those are, those will be the first things to go. I, I don't want to speak ill of anyone who has been in these roles in the past, and there were legal challenges that required us to make decisions that maybe could have been made with a little more foresight, but the fact is that we made some questionable financial decisions in this building. You know, the elevator, we had to address that. We didn't stop to see if we could get any grant money to get compliance on that because we had to make it happen. The restrooms, we spent all that money, and one of them, to this day, we can't even use, which is why, which is why, you know, we're using professionals as part of a complete project scope instead of piecemealing things together.
Exactly, that's a, that's a, a point that we need to keep in mind, is the fact of we keep trying to, you know, and I truly don't want to spend any more money than what we have. I don't want to put a burden on the taxpayer. I'm one of the taxpayers, and I don't want to see my taxes go up anymore to do this project, but we have thrown, we've tried to piecemeal this courthouse together, trying to be, for lack of a better word, brutal for a long time, and it just keeps biting us in the butt. We need professionals that know what they're doing, come in here, get this thing done, get it off our plate, and move forward with bigger and better things for the community.
Yeah, and, and there are some conversations that we are having with the committee, the architects and engineers, to do that. Like, right now, the plan's called for tile floor in the lower level. We're going to look at pigmented, poured-up concrete instead. So, yeah, we've had, like, as I said a moment ago, we could cut some of the restrooms. It's just going to be a question of which ones we cut and what kind of pushback we're going to get on not having an employee restroom on this floor or that floor. But there are a couple of restrooms we could cut. We're looking at that. Yes, they will be. On the upper level, that, we're not going to be able to do that, I don't think, but on the main level and the lower level, that's what it will be. Yes. 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 We do have to have a certain number in the whole building. Unfortunately, even though most of the time, there's only, you know, the departmental staff and two or three people coming in and out, because there's a meeting room in the building that has a certain capacity, you have to meet a certain number of restroom, of fixtures. We, we have, we're looking into a variance for some of that, but you can only go so far below that cap. We might, the most we could probably reasonably reduce, I would say, is three. One on the main level, two on the lower level. And then another line item in here that we may be able to pull or reduce is the sidewalks outside. Right now, there is pricing in this to remove and replace the sidewalks, but if Ton and Blank or their subcontractor can repair the retaining wall without destroying the sidewalks, then we'll be able to reduce that out of the site con, I think that's the site concrete line. But these conversations are still ongoing, and some of them, we may end up in a situation where we have to issue the bond to include it, and then when we get to that point in the construction and Ton and Blank says, "We don't need that," then that can be de-obligated or put towards the first payment. But there are some situations where you just, you can't risk not having the money just in case it doesn't go as planned, but you can set it back. I mean, that is still a possibility. Chuck had raised that idea several months ago in the interim. I know some other obligations have been made with that money, but using that ARPA money for HVAC is still a possibility if that's what the county wants.
Any more questions?
And I will add one more thing.
Okay.
Adam had been one of the council representatives on our steering committee. If somebody wants to step in to replace him, I would welcome that. I've been including Jeff, and he's attended when he can since he had been in the capacity as sheriff, but if somebody, in addition to Jeff, wants to be part of that, I would, I would be happy to have a second council member in those conversations.
If nobody else wants to do it, I'd be more than happy to volunteer.
You're never in the city, Ken, when I need you. Okay.
Yeah, it was Adam.
Okay, and I'll keep her in the loop.
Want to make a motion for that, or? How about a motion? Oh, somebody... Second? Got a second. Motion in a second for Sheila to be on the steering committee for the courthouse project. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same. Motion carried.
That's still ongoing. There is a point of disagreement on the committee as far as balancing single-point entry, historic preservation, general appearance of the building goes. Ms. Thompson has taken a hard line in favor of, we'll say, 100% historic preservation with respect to the north stairway. And we have kicked around some alternative ideas in the committee that would still preserve part of the stairway as well as the block walls, but create a direct rather than circuitous path to get to the lower-levels doors, so that that could be our single-point entry. The main-level doors outside of what is currently the, what are currently the clerk and recorder's offices would only be exit and, and that we could maintain all entry into the building, north side, front, without having to go under the stairs. It could go through the stairs essentially. It was, it was a very passionate, Mitty conversation.
She is represented from historical...
And her, her input is valued, but this has to be a project that makes the best sense for using it for the future, and if we can do 50% historic preservation, 50% better function, that's better than zero and 100. That's ongoing. And now that you have all, you've had a chance to discuss this, you've had it for a few days, don't hesitate to call, email, come by the office, talk into, if one of you wants to be put in touch with somebody on the construction team or the architect team directly to get questions, I will, I am happy to do that.
More questions? Nathan?
Yes. We, so as of right now, the current plan is that we will have two entry, main level north, lower level north, and then lower level west would be emergency exit as well as staff access. So if somebody from Chris's office needs to get to the clerk's office or the auditor's office, they can go that way. If, if we proceed with this option for single-point entry, the north upper level would also be egress, it just wouldn't be ingress.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's nothing further? Like I said, feel free to come by the office, call, text. I will happily answer any questions I can or direct them to whoever needs to hear them. All right, that's number one. Number two is County Resolution Number 2023-04, and this is the preliminary resolution creating an economic revitalization area for the Bottle Brush Solar Project. With it, you have the Exhibit A, which is the list of all the parcels and their owners, and Exhibit B, the map. If you choose to approve this this evening, that will trigger the process that involves my publishing a legal notice informing the public of it. You're setting a public hearing at the June meeting, and then you're taking public comment and then deciding whether you want to approve the ERA designation, and any tax abatement might be requested, and with that, any economic development payments that might be offered by the developer. I have Matt Mueller with me here tonight from Invenergy, who is going to address you briefly before you have any questions you might want to ask.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. My name's Matt Muller from Invenergy. Invenergy is the largest-held private renewable company. We're located just in Chicago. We build projects throughout the country, but Midwest is our focus point. This project would be 200 megawatts, which we expect would be about 1,500 acres, so smaller than all the acres listed on that map. By the time of construction, if this project were to go through, I'd expect it to be our fourth project, fourth solar project here in Indiana. Currently have one under construction in Clinton County, one starting this week in Sullivan, and another in Sullivan and Pike to start later. Throughout this process, happy to answer any questions for y'all. I've been working this project myself for the last year and a half, been meeting with the landowners involved. Yeah, and happy to be a resource as well. So, thank you. Any questions I can answer now?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you for your time.
Are you going to be here on the 12th?
Uh, yes, and I expect, based with Nathan, that I'll give a longer presentation, and I can, I can have some slides ready to show what the project would look like and some of our plans.
Okay.
But we'll be here on the 12th.
You will very shortly have tax and economic impact studies performed by Baker Tilly, just as you have had for previous projects. I don't know all of the numbers offhand, but I believe before any consideration of a tax abatement, the estimated annual increase to assessed value, if this project goes forward, is about $104 or $105 million.
Here, second. Got a motion in a second for the adoption of this Plaski County Resolution 2023-04. All those in favor, raise their hand. Or opposed, same sign. There we go. Two against it, four and one. Vote, Ken voted yes.
Ken, can you vocalize your yes vote, please?
Yes. I vote yes, sign yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Any further questions on that matter?
No, I haven't.
Again, just like with the courthouse project, any questions in, in the interim, let me know, but you will get those reports fairly soon, so you can start considering the options, whether you want to approve partial, full, none at all, any other questions you may have from me or from Matt or the Invenergy team.
So do we need to set the hearing date?
You just did.
Okay.
By adopting that.
Thanks, Nate. Well, we have another change in the agenda. It's Laura.
All right, so I have to have dates for the public hearing on the budget and the adoption of the budget, so I have to set September. Let me tell you, I'm saying September, September 11th and October 9th. So those are the dates that I have that I plan to report, report to you soon. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about about the budget. You know, we have 129 funds on Plaski County that we're working. Out of those 129 funds, 78 are not budgeted, 51 are. Out of the 51 budgeted, we count about 10 that are critical funds for the foot routes. Counting generally, so I'm going to send out those 13 funds that are critical in an email, and let me look at them, plus what was ruleable from those funds in 2022. And you have about $1.4 million sitting on the table in 2022. So I think we really need to look at them, especially if you want to get right, because the big companies are picking up those raises down the road. It's been a while now, and it's, and it's become a little bit. So is everyone in favor of those dates for our hearing tomorrow? The September, I mean, September 11th is the public hearing date, and October 9th will be the adoption date for the budget. At least you can change later, but this is what I'm going to record. You need to change, I mean, you can run it basically. We have the August 7th and 8th as the hearing dates for the departments to come in and discuss their budget review and tell me why they need money that they're asking for. Generally speaking, we give about 10 minutes per department. Is this okay? Some of them are asking for more. What is your feel for that? I need to know because we're, you know, scheduling them right now.
I think we ought to schedule them to be, they want 10 minutes, give them 10 if they want, 15, 20, give them, well, as long as it's not three hours. I, I mean, I, I understand, because we always get so far behind and they wait for it. And sometimes you're way far ahead, hard to tell. You know, like when the, you know, you've done order come. Yours takes a long time. And we also need to set the wage, how, how big a raise, potential raise we could give, you know. Last year, we had to come in at 5% and some other body else comes in at 35%.
It was told in the meeting, we were supposed to go for 5%, isn't that correct? And some come in at 10. Alls that does is make you have to go through more calculations because they didn't follow. And some people said they didn't know, so, so it does need to be, yes.
15%. Is that okay? Alright. Been the most I ever seen him. It was 10. Yeah. Body else like 10%? Supposed to just ask for 10.
10 would be the one.
But that's not gonna fly across the board to all the departments. Some departments are under, more underfunded than other departments. So what happens when you get a department that's not getting less funded and needs more than 10%?
15. That's why I was making 15.
Well, I mean, I sit on the floor, I've already gone through his budget, but it's more than 10%. So, and that's just one. And I know Chris's budget's pretty much the same as mine, so I'm assuming.
Mike, I think to Sheila's point, I realize that we are constrained by the money that we actually have. But Taylor and I just put in a lot of time doing a wage study, and I realize that trying to make, to, for everyone to digest that in time, to get all of that implemented right away is gonna be difficult, but you have all of that information. And if you don't use it, that's fine. That counts, that's the council's prerogative, but I feel like Taylor and I wasted a lot of taxpayer time and money if we did all of that work for you, and you're not even taking it into account when you think about what you want to do with budgets. When, you know, when Sheila said, "The mines hire," I mean, I gave, I, I looked at that. I, that's where I base it off for now for my draft budget until we got guidance from the council is where my wages would be to get in line with the minimum for my office that I found.
Oh, yeah. I agree. I mean, I think that's why I thought 15, because you can't give it all in one year. Can't get, guess we could, but I wouldn't.
The only thing that I can see when we were talking about, you know, looking at the wage study that, uh, Nathan Taylor did a great job on, part of that whole idea was trying to correct and, you know, correct things in pay scales because, you know, the sheriff's pay scale may be way off more than what the, uh, maintenance departments is. The maintenance departments may be different than what the highway is. And if we give a, if we look at this time from a flat, uh, you know, 15% raise, you're not fixing that deviation between different departments and what, what pay scales should be, uh, or, so I think that, I think that needs to be looked into. If we're gonna give, if we're looking at giving a percentage pay raise, in my opinion, and from working in industry and stuff, when we did pay adjustments, they were not looked at as an annual pay raise. They were looked at as a correction, trying to, uh, fix indifferences between other competing companies, other, uh, jobs out there. When we did our annual pay raise, that was looked at as a cost of living raise, trying to do something to, uh, keep in line with, uh, inflation, with the cost of living. So we give a, you know, a three to, you know, usually on average of a three to 5% pay increase, and that was considered a cost of living across the board. So I think there's two different things. If we're looking at a cost of living increase, then I would be looking at a percentage. If we're looking at correcting the indifference between departments and, uh, competitive counties out there and stuff, then that becomes a separate, uh, uh, topic. So I wouldn't see that as the, uh, cost of living increase of 15% or 10%. Personally, anything over 5% or personal on a cost of living increase would be, in my opinion, out of line. And I, can I request everybody to speak into their mics, because I can hear a few people perfectly, but some of them I can't hear. Thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Well, we, we put 100%. I mean, it doesn't matter because we're gonna change it. Uh, we just thought, you know, i- it's like, it just, like, it tends to a lot of calculation. I don't care what it, I'm just trying to get along.
All the data that I have, I could just prepare a, an addendum to the study for everyone, for you, and it'd be pretty quick. You would just, I would just need, you know, what do you want the cost of living increase to be on top of those adjustments? I could tell you, Laura needs a 9,000 increase just to be at the average for 2023 and then do 4% on top of that. I don't know if that number's right. Everyone can do it. I, I mean, I've got all that data. I can do it. It just, and then. Yeah, I mean, I'm. Yeah. No, I, and I, I'm not, I don't. I don't object to having them, and I'll do that. I just, you know that it'll be the consistent report if I just take it straight from there and, but I, I'm not saying that I want to add on the extra work. You can, every department head has the report, so they can do that.
We're creating a nightmare for Laura.
That's probably true.
I wanna, I wanna tell you about this matrix. Out of 24 departments in this county, we have 20 point pay scales, different pay scales. 21. That doesn't include another 12 people who are on special wages. No pay scale, they just get special wages. Out of that, we have 10 boards. Out of those 10 boards, every one of them gets paid differently. Constantly, when you give this to, to a department to do, then my department is in nightmare mode. This matrix, out of, out of the 21, uh, pay scales, out of the 24 departments, there are two departments that get a longevity raise after two years. Everybody else in the county has to wait five years. I don't quite see this as being even. I don't know what you think. This is the council's job to give this matrix and set this. And every time a department comes in here and says, "Well, this is what I want," and it gets changed, the matrix gets skewed again. And it's a constant, it's a constant problem in my department. And of course, nobody sees that. It's very aggravating.
So I guess, Laura, how, how do you suggest that, that you, I don't know how, to me, obviously, certain departments, they're gonna be different. They just have different jobs. You can't come in here, I don't think, and like this whole county and say, you know what I mean?
No, you can't. And you, and you, right, the sheriff, the sheriff's department has 10 different, out of 21, the sheriff's department has 10 different pay scales. Now, I really don't think you need that many. Some of the reason why they do this is because some of them are on a 24-hour shift, and some of them are on 40 hours, and, and there's different shifts for different, for different hourly amounts for different departments within the department, so to speak. And I get that, but I really think it can be scaled down to not be, be this monster that I have to deal with.
Is that what you said in that one email where you said the state had said, you know, there's law enforcement, there were like six or seven categories. You just said here a few days.
That was part of the study, with that, there are categories, because we've.
Yeah, it would be very helpful. That would be very helpful. The scale is down, this, this too, a more standardized, instead of having our department calling on different pay scales and, and different longevity rates or timeframes, periods. Let's kind of even it out. Let's talk about these boards. There is 10 boards in this county. Uh, the drainage board gets $65.17 per meeting. The council, you get 114.56 per meeting. The Peta Boa board gets $118 per meeting. The, the health department board gets $118.55 per meeting. They make more than you do. I, I, I don't get.
And then the plan commission, they get like 52 bucks a meeting or something? Plan commission?
The plan commission is 80, you're getting the $50 per meeting. I, I don't get it. I don't get why this strength of boards and different wages, every time you turn around, and when you do a percent, like, well, let's give everybody 5% at the time, then I end up with $50.15 per meeting for a circuit board, $52.90 per meeting for another board. It's, it's, I'm sorry, this borderline ridiculous.
I think we could fix that board thing real fast next budget. I mean, that'd be really simple to fix. I mean, you know, the health department, the c- council, and somebody else is gonna make the same, and the drainage board is gonna make the same, and then other boards are gonna make maybe two different ones. Let's do that for sure. Yeah, that's simple, simple. Well, this has to be done before their budget hearings, though. You need to be involved for your help, too. Yeah, your payroll. Next meeting, kick it down another month.
I guess, uh, I want to interject something for a minute. I mean, I'm all for fixing anything that, that we can fix, streamline and make things better. But I guess I'm requesting that we, we put it on paper in a, you know, if we have a request, let's write it down so we can all have an opportunity to read what these changes are and, and have, uh, a chance to rumble over in our minds. That way, when we come to our next meeting, we can, we'll be prepared to make a change. Uh, I think that would be very beneficial. I know it would be beneficial to me to see it on paper, and I think it would help everybody else as well.
Matrix committee. Who's on that? Anybody know? Gary's on the matrix committee. Who is? Jeff, you on the matrix committee?
It's been so long since you made, put the matrix committee to order. I don't know if some of those people are even with the county anymore, Mike.
Well, let's start a new one.
Are you gonna pay them, which board rate are you gonna pay matrix committee at?
Let's still have a matrix committee, because then it, obviously, it didn't work. So.
Well, Mike, I, I.
Let's meet at our next, uh, council meeting after the meeting, I guess, or. Get that fixed for sure. That's one step. And then maybe, can you write down your recommendations? There you go.
I have, I am on the matrix committee. There's Kevin, uh, I believe, or the, the group. We, we're not like a committee, because we're not a forum, but there was the groups that got together, uh, of, uh, I think there was a councilman that was involved, or a commissioner involved as well. But nothing's ever brought to us. I mean, you want us to meet and, and make decisions or help come up with some ideas. Like I said, we need this stuff put on paper and presented to, to us. I mean, I'm all for, if we all want to get together after a meeting and discuss it as a, as a special session or whatever, but to, I guess, support the committee. If nothing's brought to us and we're never given anything in paper or writing, then we have nothing to meet over.
Nobody has ever been informed. The departments have not been informed. I was never informed.
I think that's why they ended up scrapping it, because they realized that they were supposed to be subject to the open door law and weren't compliant. So instead of, instead of announcing their meetings according to notice regulations, they just quit.
So basically, it should be streamlined for the sheriff's department, and there should be something else in place for the other departments.
I'm not saying, I, I am in the, the council, not my decision, not my decision.
Yeah, I have, I understand. So if it works for the sheriff's department, and it's still working for the sheriff's department, then it, then we should use it for the sheriff's department. But if that's the structure that you want to use to pay everyone else.
This matrix thing is growing animal, it's even uncontrollable, and private sheriffs are, I mean, it's staying. I understand Laura, because Laura never know what the pay scale of the people on it. And I agree 100%. You know, you scare me. And I agree one hundred percent. You know, when you scare me, we start talking about a five or ten percent because of wage study that Nathan did. Five or ten percent is gonna make my people leave them. We have people, I have people, I'm telling you right now, two, three deputies waiting to see what you guys do, and then they're gonna, look, I guess it all boils down to health, health force, politics, and I bet jailers the same way. Uh, if you start talking about measures and worries like that, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I, I agree, we need to clear our budgets, and I told everybody, I said, don't even ask me about something else. My main focus is to get you guys home. I don't wanna hear about a destiny theory, because I wanna hear that stuff. We're already a, it's all about means and wants. Um, I think if you separate everybody else out, you know, Gary's in the same position I, you know, he, he's losing people right and left. I'm losing people right and left. The other departments, nothing against them, but they're not losing people like I am. They go to pass county names, seventeen thousand dollars more as of twenty twenty-three. A lot of wage study Nathan put out was, was last year and the year before, which is not Nathan's fault, it's just, it's stuff he had to work with. These departments go out because they recognize that, that they need to raise their wages. You are raising the state police data six million dollars, and they were asking for more because representatives said, we, we capped at sixty-nine, they want eighty thousand to start this trip, because you guys can't hire anybody now. He goes, we're not gonna give more than that. Because what are you gonna, what are you gonna do? As Ken will tell me, he said, what are you people gonna do if, if, if we raise that eighty thousand dollars? I gotta have something to do. It just makes you nervous that we're gonna cap at a ten percent. That's not gonna fix it. I have a lot of good officers. Um, I put my three, they have me at sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars to put that, to put that officer to cap, and then you're gonna have to build another county around here, or you can pay a little bit more money to, to get this thing going. I agree with Laura a hundred percent. Twenty-two pay scales is ridiculous, and Jeff knows more than I do about this pay scale thing. I thought we should have been separated out years ago, and that's what it was designed for. It's not designed to have everybody else on, on the same wage scale. I didn't realize it was that big. So Laura's got a valid point.
And I think, Chris, what you, what you just said, like, if I recall correctly, and Jeff, you might know better, back when the matrix was adopted, it was, it was an attempt to fix an issue that we had where there was unpredictability. Oh, this person retired after forty years, and this person with no experience is jumping on at that pay scale. But the council tried to fit the square hole of other departments, or square peg into the round hole of something set up for the sheriff's department. My department is structured and has different needs than Laura's department than highway, and they just tried to make this across-the-board thing. And, and they're, I mean, in trying to get it that, they reduce the number of headaches on one line for Laura's side, but it makes it harder for some departments to get what they need and to pay the right scales. I mean, nobody has, you know, and part of that is maybe not changing the percentages in the scale, but where the department heads are going so that pay for their deputies is reflective of individual offices' levels of responsibility and difficulty.
Everything else is secondary to that, because I don't want these officers there, and I'm going to something that's happening. And I'm nervous, I'll sleep over this, the deputies every day, they, they, they come in and talk to you, the jailers, the dispatchers. You think something's gonna do? I'm saying, I can't keep doing this. I can't keep all my, I'll save this for later. I'm with you, you know, I said, I'm trying to, why don't we give them a chance? And that's the first, I can't tell you enough time, that's the first thing my priority was, is to try and get this guy here. You gotta, you know, it's a big investment for this county, for those officers, you know, I got one there now. He started May, he'll be done at the end of August, I believe, or the first of September. That's what, that's overtime I gotta pay for these guys. They're on their own themselves, otherwise they've got to waste money over time for so many work. Depends how much of a investment you wanna put in your, in your safety, is what it was happening to. And that's where I'm coming from. So, I mean, I can sit down with anybody at budget time before budget time, I mean, you guys have restrictions, I may can sit down with more than that, but if you ask anybody at the jail, when they ask me what my first priority is, I answer, try and get more money. I'm willing, anybody that's been talking to me and I know a couple of you guys have. And I'll make time out here, just not during days, in fact, I'm not, I'm not gonna talk to you about this. I, I agree with Laura. This white matrix thing is, is just going out of proportion and, and it doesn't work for everybody, it just doesn't. I know Gary, I talked to him today, he's got two people left. It, it, it just, there's a problem here, but we can fix it somehow. I appreciate you talking about it. It's hard for you to sit over there and not say your name, so anytime if I'm a swap out award, I'm here with this.
Gary?
Well, I, I mean, you need a statement. This office, first, you don't do all that study where you need to be. Need to throw that together and give you an idea of what possibly departments need to be at. That's a starting point. That's a lot of nerve to move around right now.
Right.
I've lost two. I've got two more to state, and I got probably three more to state. I mean, I'm getting kind of nervous for a roadblock, seeing, uh, B, because everybody around us is getting home. Start kinda just give out your articles, four months.
Okay. We didn't decide anything except for the board things. We're gonna fix that one. So how much are we gonna allow to go into the budget? So we're just gonna let the, be the, our wages are gonna be the Wild West, and we're gonna leave it at that. Is that okay? Well, next meeting, we probably oughta do it before, 'cause- Have a special meeting. No, not really. I'm just saying that everybody's coming here, Ken will be here, and everybody will be here, and it just seems like it's better after. I don't care.
That's all you have to talk about, and there's none of the questions, and there's not all these other things.
I think Chris and Gary had the nail on, on the head of maybe to figure out, essentially, get every department up together, it shouldn't be. And then it'd be like us to figure out the cost of living.
Nathan, can you get us that information?
Of course.
And then maybe, maybe you could email it to all of us. Kind of decide if we wanna have a special meeting or have it before.
The only guidance I need is whether you want me just to tell you what each position should be this year, or if you wanna give me a cost of living percentage to add to that, so you know what you're actually looking at for next year's budget. If you wanna agree on a percentage rate right now or not.
I think, I just- Ken, put that on the agenda.
Hey, Mike, I would also like to see the, the five-year increment. It's tough for our guys to wait five years to be favored. Our guys don't have that.
I know, but do you like two better?
Yeah, because they're not, they're not staying two, twenty years, that's not it.
Okay. Sounds good.
You know, I've always said two, let's do it dollars per hour versus percentage. Because that gives, takes all that extra calculation out of it. Yeah, I really, that needs to get everybody over there.
Well, they used to have, go ahead.
The sheriff's department is based on the sheriff's base payout, we've got change in two years' term, but we're pumping seventy-seven thousand dollars. So a percentage of seventy-seven thousand dollars is a whole lot better than what my staff gets at, at my base rate, which is forty. It's just like, this is really not real.
And they, uh, I like the wage, too, 'cause if you, whatever you do, that's the job you're doing. And in Clinton County, I know, 'cause we discussed it, I didn't vote for it, but, uh, in Clinton County, you, uh, you work there five, or five years, or two years, or whatever it is, they give you an extra day of vacation for every year you're there, or something like that. Some of those guys have been there thirty years, you know, man, they're getting a couple, three months off. That's their longevity pay. Because Gervis up here always wanting to get longevity pay, always getting, getting longevity pay. You know, they did the same, and then Jeff thought of the, the, the state does the matrix, right? Well, then that's how that came about, and you know, I mean, for the police, it may work, but not for everybody. Because if you drive a truck, you drive a truck, but in Clinton County, you get vacation instead of more money. Everybody gets, whatever, they get an hour. That's just another county.
You know, it might not come up to ten percent. It might come up to nine, it might come up to eleven. You follow them, so that's what, just the dollars per hour.
Tim, I think there, I think there are arguments on either side of that to be made in favor and against, but I think probably, council probably needs to get a sense of where you need to be to have everyone at the right pay scale before you make that kind of change. And then I think you can look at that and make it a little more fair, but if, if you just throw X dollars, even within the matrix, you know, a three dollar an hour raise for Laura is not as valuable as a three dollar an hour raise for her deputy. And is that, are you saying that her deputy deserves more as a percentage of her value? Because I mean, I think, I think once you get things, like, evened out, you say, this is what Laura should be, this is where, and, and you effectively have to get rid of the matrix, or you have to restructure it dramatically if you get rid of percentages and go by weight. Because, you know, if I'm at eighty percent of Laura's rate this year, and we both get a dollar, I'm no longer gonna be at the eighty percent.
I've never been to a council meeting when we didn't talk about wages.
I think this, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. Uh, they, you know, I think, once again, we, we're, we're looking at two different things. You know, I spent my whole life in private sector industry, and in private sector industry, I've worked for, you know, not a lot of different companies, but I've worked for two or three of the largest in the, in the world. They were the biggest at what they do, and not saying that they do things correctly either, because as we all know, you know, that's not true as well. But time has shown us, and being involved in things, like I said, we have a cost of living, and I know in private industry, not saying that all do it, but the majority that I've been involved with, well, all that I've been involved with over the last thirty years, when it's a cost of living increase, it's a percentage. Everybody gets a percentage across the board because that's fair, equitable to each employee. So if the cost of living goes up five percent, and we give a five percent pay raise, everybody gets a cost of living increase that's equal across the board. When we get pay adjustments, which is a separate thing, which, you know, we're, we're, what Nathan's, and Hillary's study is, that's a pay adjustment. That was a dollar figure. One, one, maintenance might have gotten a two-dollar pay raise, and shipping might have got a one-dollar pay raise. We gave that, not on a percentage basis, but we gave that on a dollar figure. So, you know, in my opinion, we need to, you know, separate the apples from the oranges, and if we're talking about a cost of living increase, then we're talking about one thing. If we're talking about wage adjustments and making pay scales equitable across all departments, then we're talking about a dollar figure, because one group may get one, and one group may get another.
I think we're good here. How are you guys? Good? I think we need to get what he's gonna, if it's- Okay, we're gonna move along. I'm at number one now. I thought that was what you wanted. That was your time. Thought that's all you wanted. Go ahead, I'm, yeah.
I will look into it and get back to you on, but I mean, some of those, it's just the degree of classification, and you might have a, oh, is this deputy- I will look into it and get back to you on, but that, I mean, some of those, it's just the degree of classification and you might have a, oh, is this deputy-